We'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order this Wednesday, September 6, 2023. If staff could call roll, please.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
Present.
Philip Coombs is absent at this time.
He's here.
Oh, hello. Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Brian Parsons.
Here.
Robert Estrada. Don Daniels.
Here.
Korm.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Welcome, everyone. Good seeing you for our little summer vacation, so. Good to.
What happened to me?
Yeah, okay, so we have before us on June 21st, I believe it says, yes, June 21st, 2023 minutes.
I make a motion, except the minutes is written.
Great. Mr. Wagaman made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pearson, second it. Any comments, changes? Hearing none. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing none, minutes passed as written. Thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Great. Anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak under public comments or online? If I have anyone online? I don't see anybody.
Mr. Chair, you do have someone in the audience.
Yep, I'm no problem. So if you just come up to the microphone, state your name and the city you reside in.
Thank you. Good evening, Lakewood Planning Commission. My name is Maria Tobin, and I am the Program Coordinator for the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, otherwise known as SSMCP. Our partnership organization provides regional leadership to bridge the military and civilian communities that surround Joint Base Lewis McCord. And in doing so, SSMCP facilitates a framework of collaboration among our more than 50 partners, consisting of local jurisdictions as well as public, private, and nonprofit organizations that are working at the nexus of where the civilian and military populations meet in our community. As a result of this collaboration, SSMCP can then provide actionable and impactful recommendations for policy changes and budget requests that affect our South Sound communities. I am here today on behalf of SSMCP to show our support for the incorporation of Amendment 11, which you guys will talk about at a later point, among your annual development recommendations, because we believe it reduces unnecessary barriers for commercial childcare centers to expand in a significant portion of the city. SSMCP is focused on this issue because after several years of working to expand affordable childcare and even getting a DOD childcare subsidy, we've come to the conclusion that still we cannot negate the fact that community demand far exceeds the current childcare capacity in largely most of Pierce and Thurston Counties, putting us right in the middle of what the state identifies as a childcare desert. After learning from our partners that commercial childcare zoning was a real issue for childcare providers to expand, we asked the Lakewood Planning Team to take a look at their current allowance for outright permitted childcare and then take a look at its ability to increase that total permissible area. Looking at Pierce County and further at Lakewood, we noticed that in the middle of these deserts, there were a spattering of areas that did offer sufficient childcare to meet the population's needs. And as, and we took a look, a deeper dive into those pockets, we saw a commonality among most of them, leading us to believe that where adequate childcare exists, it is also allowed and it's fully permitted. This makes sense to us when you consider the fact that providers in our region have reported to have paid up to $10,000 in permitting fees and other requirements. Others have told us that they've had to spend $50,000 to $60,000 to meet additional conditional use requirements. Obviously, this is a cost that serves as a barrier to many providers to even consider expanding or entering the childcare market in our region. But before we go any further, I want to make one point of clarification. SSMCP does recognize that our current deficit in childcare facing our communities has more than one contributing factor. So when we consider and we ask for considerations to be made to rezone commercial childcare, we're not expecting that to solve all the issues, but we are expecting to see a step in the right direction. SSMCP's impetus for this advocacy results in the fact that more than 70% of our service members that are stationed here at JBLM are required to live off the installation and in communities like Lakewood. These folks rely heavily upon essential community services to maintain a household, like including childcare. And often, though it's necessary because we have junior enlisted service members that are have, are living in a high cost of living area in Lakewood with no other means of support. In closing, it's widely known that comprehensive community plans directly influence the provision of adequate services within our communities. However, many jurisdictions we found, both in the South Sound and nationwide, lack land availability for commercial childcare due to antiquated zoning restrictions. SSMCP is grateful to the City of Lakewood Planning Manager Jessica Olson and our Strategic Launch Planner Tiffany Spear for their proposal of this amendment, expanding childcare to a significant portion of the city. By doing so, the City of Lakewood be, would be taking both a progressive and sensible approach to expanding commercial childcare. I want to thank you for the opportunity to support this amendment, and I'll stand by with any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Everyone good? Great, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, Mr. Chair, we do have one person who has called in. It's a number that ends in 5986, and I'll just ask that person, I'll allow them to talk, to see if they'd like to testify.
Okay, would that person like to testify under public comment tonight? If you, if so, unmute yourself. Saying that you're not. Yep, there you go. If you wish to.
Hi, my name is.
Go ahead.
Hello, hello, my name is Erica Snell. I'm the Land Advisory Commissioner for Parkland Stanley Midland. And I would also like to make public comment on Amendment 11, motioning approval for expanding childcare along with Maria Tobin's comments. This is something that we have been working towards for a long time, and I just would like to announce that much research has been done to develop a strategy to expand childcare. And it's at the basis of land use. So as we're in that amendment, I am also making public comments that we move to approve this motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Mr. Estrada.
Identify yourself again, please.
Whoops. Can you state your name again? I'm sorry.
My name was, is Erica Snell. I'm the Commissioner for Land Advisory in Parkland Stanley Midland.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, and we'll close the public comment at this time, and we thank you for all your comments and your efforts that you have put into this. There is no public hearing tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we move to number eight under new business. We have the 2023 Annual Development Regulations Amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are you?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm going to start us, and then Jessica Olson, whom not everybody has met, I guess, is going to be walking you through the first 10 proposed amendments, and then I'll step in for the last two. But this is, in addition to the annual comprehensive plan amendment cycle, the city also looks to see if on an annual basis, there are needed amendments to the current municipal code, the development regulations that govern residential, commercial, and industrial development within the city. And these can stem from a number of different sources. One, it would be just the staff experience with applications that have come in. It can be public comment or reaction to the code. It can be changes in state law. So a lot of different reasons why these would come forward. And what we're doing tonight is a somewhat accelerated schedule because we have tonight the excuse me, the presentation of all of these amendments to you, and then in two weeks, both the public hearing and then action is scheduled. However, if you need more time, once you walk through these and hold your public hearing where you don't want to take action on September 20th on these amendments, of course, that is your prerogative and we can adjust. But as it stands, you would be taking public comment on the 20th and then potentially taking action that evening. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Olson, and maybe she can introduce herself to you because this is, I think, her first time in front of the commission.
Great, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Jessica Olson, I'm the new essentially Planning Manager for Development Services, covering current planning and permit counter. So something I do with my staff is when we run into inconsistencies or things where the code's not super clear, we'll dock it them down, and then we'll come through at the development regulation cycle and see what we can tweak to make sure that we're being efficient and clear in our codes. And so a lot of these are ones that have come up either through the application didn't work, we always have a question on it, or there might be a loophole that wasn't intended that some of the applicants are trying to use for a different purpose. So we've learned a few things about our code, so this is the summary, and I'll go into each one and why we are proposing them essentially. So most of them fix things. This first one actually, first two actually change something. So most of them are, there's no real change, it's just fixing something. But these two, I'll point out, are actual changes. So for Amendment 1, we went through a circumstance where, actually multiple circumstances, where we've seen the need for standalone truck trailer parking for industrial manufacturing uses. And not seeing a big impacted that would have on the industrial areas because that land would still be available in the future, we felt like it was appropriate for as a temporary use potentially to be able to allow those as a conditional use within the industrial zones. And so there was a circumstance where a lot of these applicants are trying to get to these uses through a different means. So we thought, why not just permit it as a use and define the use itself? And so that's what Amendment 1 does. It adds a new use type for standalone truck trailer parking to the use tables, and it defines what that is. And it's essentially any kind of parking, temporary parking for semi trucks and their trailers, whether together or separate on a piece of property, and that is the primary use. Right now, we use it as an accessory to industrial land, so they have to be on the parcel itself. So that's the difference, is it's just by itself as parking.
Mr. Larson, you had a question?
Thank you. It's wonderful to have you here.
Thank you.
Why a conditional use rather than an outright allowed use? Because it seems industrial, why not just allow it?
Great question. So one of the things is, this is a new kind of use that we're permitting, so you tend to want to see how it goes. And then the conditional use permit, you have more control over how the use is allowed on the property. So if there's things that we need to mitigate for, you can do that through the conditions of approval. So it was more of a test the water situation and see if we should just permit them outright. So again, that's, that's something that's up to the adopting bodies to decide, yeah. But it's, we propose it as conditional.
Why wouldn't we do just the opposite, allow it outright and see if it causes any problems that require conditional use? And might be a smoother and straighter way to go.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
Mr. Buhr.
We've had some difficulties with people who have proposed what I'm going to call off-site trucking facilities. For example, the one facility off of 84th Avenue, they maximized their space and didn't provide for adequate truck parking in the first place. So they decided that they would go ahead and provide for off-site parking. But that approval was subject to a conditional use permit that places standards on existing roads surrounding the property. They wanted to bypass an amendment to the conditional use permit and have the city agree to an off-site trucking facility. We ended up in an appeal process before the hearing examiner. He basically said, in that particular case, you need to unwind the previously approved use permit before you start asking for an off-site parking lot for trucks. The other issue is truck parking is a big problem in the Puget Sound. We're beginning to see property owners that have excess space in their parking lots leasing out their parking facilities for truck parking. And sometimes that can be adjacent to multifamily apartment-type uses or or create some issues with surrounding truck, traffic systems. Another good example is the parking lot on Chick-fil-A. If you've noticed, there's all kinds of big trucks parked there. They're parked overnight. They're not supposed to be there. It's an ongoing issue for code enforcement. And when they try to pull onto Lakewood Drive, they get stuck. And then now we have a traffic problem on Lakewood Drive, and we have to call out big truck things to have them moved off the center line. And that part of the problem is the Lakewood Industrial Park doesn't allow them in until 7:00 AM. And so they looking for a place to park, and so they've been pulling over there. So those are some examples that I can tell you. We have, we are going to have issues in the Woodbrook neighborhood because we did allow for, through a administrative process, a period in time where you could have off-site trucking for a period of up to five years, and then you have to come back and actually develop it into into space. But in the meantime, there's more people requesting conversion of existing lands into industrial areas and for the purpose of truck parking. And here's the other point, truck parking doesn't generate revenue.
Thanks for that clarification. My perspective was that it was neat and tidy inside properly operated industrially zoned land. And, and I hadn't thought about these other aspects. Thank you.
Mr. Wagaman.
Since one of our revenue getters here in the community is warehouses, and warehouses, to me, implies trucks. So we either, and, and one of the things is, we have a lot of places covered with blacktop that aren't being used, i.e., you know, you can look at the mall. So we've talked about that, you know, do you turn those into parks? Or can we put some kind of method that allows temporary parking, a place for them to go? I, I agree with Mr. Buhr. You know, I've, I've seen a problem there in Chick-fil-A that, you know, old Kmart. How many times have trucks pie centered there? So if, if, if we're allowing warehouses to be built in our community, which I think is a reasonable idea because it's certainly a revenue getter, then we should be, try to work to be a little bit warehouse friendly, I would think. And is that what this amendment's going to do?
I, I would put it to you this way. Our goal is to make sure when a warehouse is developed, it's developed so it's properly designed so that has sufficient space for trucks. Right now, they're, they're taking their lot, they're maximizing the space, and then they lease it out, and they worry about the parking later. And, and that's not the right way to do this because it, it impedes and creates problems for property owners. And keep in mind, too, we have limited space in Lakewood.
Agreed.
You know, so we're doing infill on warehouse development. A good example of that is in the neighborhood, or the AC2 zone off of 84th Street, where we had one large warehouse go in and remove a school and, and come in and put in a warehouse facility. In that particular case, they did provide for additional truck space, and they also were required to install hundreds of trees. But, you know, that, that's how we, we've come to learn about this. We've learned from our own errors, frankly. You know, next time a warehouse comes in, we're checking to make sure they have the proper widths and lengths for trucks based upon the size of the warehouse. And if it's not sufficient size, then they need to provide for truck parking appropriately.
Thank you.
Another question, Mr. Coombs.
I think this is great. We need it, they need it, the off-site parking. I'm probably err on the side of doing it first and not going the conditional use route. I've seen this great need for it. I get the concern. So I think that if we just, you know, prove it as it's outlined now, we can always cross that bridge later. If we just want to make it easier and more fundamental, there is rent income that can come from this. And up in, up north, it does generate revenue. And so whether we're seeing that down here fully yet is, you know, to be determined. But whatever buildings there are, are more valuable because of that extra parking. So a shortage of parking on that, that, all of the industrial properties are in a hunger for more of this parking. And so I like this as a, let's, you know, kind of ease it up so that it's not trickling over into properties that probably shouldn't otherwise have it, in my mind. And yeah, I think this is a more of a catch-up policy, and I think it's a good thing, so.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Go right ahead again, Jessica.
For number two?
Yep.
So Amendment number two is addressing issues with vehicle theft. And so one of the ways to deter, and we've found that it actually is working, is electric fencing. I actually had a call from code enforcement saying, oh, we're seeing more of it, and it's working. So a lot of the dealerships and some other, you know, people with outdoor storage are asking for this electric fencing. A lot of them are in the commercial zones. Right now, we only allow it in industrial zoning, so it would just expand the same rules that already exist in the industrial zones in the commercial zones.
Mr. Estrada.
So what's the liability here? Liability for, for the industrial individual, company that uses the fence, electrical fences.
No, that's their, Dave, do you have?
Well, that's a business decision for that, for them. If they feel that they're losing product as a result of theft versus going ahead and installing security fencing that keeps the theft from happening, then, then at the same time, the, this is a low voltage electro, electric system, and a lot of the times, it's just not, it's not electrification per se, but it's notification through security agents that, that someone is trying to enter at that location within the fence. It can be either one of those things. You already have existing rules and regulations that control signage, landscaping, the height of these fences, and no one's objecting to them. The first one to do it was a rental facility off of South Tacoma Way. We did it as an administrative determination, and they have not had a problem, and they've been here for like five years. And so it's really caught on. I, I think that we need to do this, given the current court system that we have that's allowing for this behavior to move forward. If, if public safety and public agencies can't provide for the safety, then you're going to look at private agencies and companies to come up with a solution. And it appears to us that the electrification of fences seems to be something that does work. The Tacoma Planning Commission did consider this several months ago, and they made a recommendation not to do it. We are making a recommendation to move forward with it based upon how we've seen it operate already in Lakewood and in commercial and industrial areas, and it seems to have been effective so far.
Great. No other questions? Oh, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Buhr, do you know what their concerns were and why they didn't move forward with it? What was something that was, you know, any of the?
I, I'm doing this from memory based upon a newspaper article. But my understanding was there were some concerns about that this policy or this proposal violating what is referred to as the Tacoma One Program, where we're all together as a community. And this is basically saying or pointing out that we're not one, and, and we're trying to figure a way of keeping people from vandalizing property, I suppose. I can't give you a good answer, I'm sorry, but I, and I cannot recall what the Tacoma City Council did.
Yep, thanks. Mr. Coombs.
That probably isn't a good answer as to why they wouldn't have approved it, because this is a sensible thing. This protects the, the people, protects the property, protects the businesses. The only one it doesn't protect is the criminal. And so it's used in a lot of other cities, higher fences, other things, and we should explore all of those things until the court systems adapt as well. But right now, I would give them every tool, and this is effective. This has been working at several properties that I work on, and car theft in a very high number percentage. And so this would be, I, I'm surprised we don't have more problems.
I will also tell you that if you go out and start looking for these, they're kind of hard to find.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Parsons.
Yeah, just to follow up, wholeheartedly agree, and I would even say, I think it's just, it's safety for the community. So anything we can do to put this to commercial zones, I think we should do, and we'd fully support it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wagaman.
Yeah, I, I kind of support this, too. I work as a building engineer up on South 23rd Street, right by Walmart. And, you know, every two weeks, we pay a thousand dollars to repair our fence. And so fence is not enough. There needs to be more. You know, you hate to see concertina wire across the top, but certainly electric fence will, you know, when you bite into it with your bolt cutters, you should get a nice tickle in your hands, or, you know, so that'd be a good thing, in my opinion.
Mr. Larson?
I'm two thumbs up on this one. I see it every day, and this is a good move for us.
Yeah, great, thank you. Good, thank you. Continue on.
Thank you. So Amendment number three is one of those loophole ones I was talking about. The unusual use permit was starting to be, actually, it was tied back to some of that truck trailer parking issues. They were using it as a way to permit things that are we would have interpreted differently in the code as a planner. And so we're kind of trying to close that loophole by being more specific in the definition of unusual use, where it's really something that we just could not anticipate when we wrote the code. Something, it's not something that's used as an accessory use, but not defined as a primary use, those things. So I tried to close the door by just may, being more specific in that definition of unusual use.
Mr. Wagaman.
Could you give some examples of that? I mean.
So the, with the one example, it's the appeal that Dave had mentioned about the truck trailer parking, they were trying to say because of its essentially it's a more of an unusual circumstance that they needed this part, this property would be good for truck trailer parking, and so we were, but it's an accessory use. It's defined as an accessory, truck trailer parking is, but it's not defined as a primary use. And so they were trying to define it as, well, it's not allowed here, but it's, it's like other things that are allowed in the zone, so you should tell us that we can do it. And so they, essentially, the unusual use, they're asking us to make an interpretation that the use that they're talking about is similar to other uses that are already permitted. And so it was kind of this workaround, and it goes to the hearing examiner. And so at that point, it kind of gets out of staff's hands and goes between public comment, the hearing examiner's determination, and what staff, you know, says, and it could, you don't know what you're going to get at that point. Sorry, I see Dave wants to add.
A good example, if someone's proposing a home occupation, has like, he's brewing beer, he or she's brewing beer, that's allowed. Okay, but now all of a sudden, well, I also want to have a small little tavern. I'm just going to have like five tables or something like that. And we would say, well, that use is not listed, so therefore it's not allowed. Person could come back and say, well, this is an unusual use. I mean, it gets a little silly at times, and so that's why we're trying to better define it.
Sure. Good. Thank you.
With this apply, you know, we have military close, and they do a lot of do-it-yourself moves, you know, where they have trailers. And so you go to mo, mobile, I mean, motels and stuff like that. They don't have places where you can hook, have a trailer and a car hooked together. So now you end up probably killing four parking spaces that, that are there. And, and so sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. I remember when my wife and I moved, we had two cars with two trailers, and so we we're always looking for a place to park, and, and that's difficult. So how do we, you know, help our local motels, you know, take care of those kinds of issues? That would, in a, in a sense, is unusual, and it only happens when our people are inbound or outbound, in which is basically months of the year.
That, to me, is not necessarily unusual use. That's an unusual circumstance. And if the if the motel owner allows it and it's temporary, I don't see that being a problem.
I'll add to that too. We all, we have the director's determination, which would allow us to classify it as something similar and determine if it is, you know, a permitted use in the zone. So there's already a a means to an end for something like that. Whereas the unusual use permit was intended to be for supernatural circumstances. Like they always use a example of like a space station, even though we're not in space. I don't know why we use that one.
Mr. Larson.
So this is a perpetual problem in every jurisdiction in which in which I've done business is getting everything understood and you just can only come so close and this helps get you closer. And it's not ever going to be a perfect world in terms of vagaries, but I think it's a good step forward.
A good example, say someone wanted to install a server station in Lakewood. That's not a use that's described anywhere in our zoning code. They could ask for a director's determination or they could request that we consider this to be an unusual use. Stuff like that. Another one would be a micro neighborhood micro fulfillment center.
Yeah.
So, you know, a lot of this is relative to, right now, technology is making changes on how we use land.
So what about when, you know, I think it's Custer and Bridgeport. You know, they got a tent. Well, first off, they had a food truck in there, then now it's gone and now they have a tent or covered awning with a barbecue pit and they're barbecuing chicken. And, you know, there's almost no place for people to park to come in there. You know, so they've set up a business kind of thing. And not that I want to stop people being entrepreneurs, but it just seems like.
That's not an unusual use. That's a zoning violation and probably also violation violates certain health codes as well.
Well, I know, because it, you know, to even go out to the fair and work in any of the volunteer booths, you got to have a food permit and all of us kind of think, whoa, is that happening? So.
I I could speak for the code officers, but there's several people who are always involved in illegal activities that we have to go out, remind people what is allowed and what is not.
Yeah, great. Okay, continue on.
All right, thank you. So amendment four, it's it's really long in its text form, but that's just because the administration section is quite long. And there's just a couple of touch points where we moved a few things around. So between the Title Seventeen's or subdivision code, it sets forth what types of permits, the different plats and short plats and things are, as well as the, I'm sorry, I think that's it. And then there's some timeframes associated with that in the administration and eighteen A. And so there were inconsistencies between them. In this case, the subdivision code is really the one that was accurate and that we should rely on. The administration was updated to match that. And then there's also a few that were not in there, like binding site plan amendments and I think plot amendments and one or two other ones. So all we did was add the words in and made the ones that were wrong correct.
All right.
It's a long one, but it's a simple one. Amendment five is very similar where there was some outdated language in the sign code that also dealt with administration, timeframes and and things like that. And so the ones that were older, not the newer ones, with the older ones that were removed. And then anything else that was related to that was moved over to the administration section with the other language that was part of the different timeframes. Okay. The next one, these are going to be super simple because a lot of them are like this. The amendment number six has to deal again with timeframe. So in our code, we had like three different instances where for CIPA or land use decisions, there were different timeframes for when you put out the public comment periods and things like that. And it got really confusing when we went into appeals because the hearing examiner had said one of them, we should have used one instead of the other. So we decided to just follow the RCW and do them all the same. There will be fourteen days for public comment periods for standalone permits. So CIPA and other land use decisions and twenty one days if they're done together. Amendment seven, this is another one where I kind of had to be more specific in a definition because people were trying to use it as a loophole. So in the land use tables and the commercial tables, we have a use called flex space. And it's the building. It has, it's not what uses are in the building. It's just talking about a building. Think like a commercial center as a use type. So it's how the layout is and then what it looks like. So the flex space, it's actually, I looked all the way back to the original ordinance. It's from the county code. And so it's really old use type definition. And the way people are trying to use it is, oh, this flex space, I can do anything in it. So if a warehouse was not permitted in a commercial zone, they'd think they could do a flex space and have a warehouse in the flex space, which is not the case. Typically, when you have a use type that's the building or the way that like a business park is could be a use type, you would still only be allowed to do the different uses that are allowed in the zone in that flex space building or in that commercial center or in that business park, right? This definition didn't articulate that. And so we figured, why not just be specific and say it instead of having to make the interpretation every time and have potential appeals and things like that and questioning whether we were supposed to do that or not. So that one does specify the use has to be permitted in the underlying zone if they're going to be in that flex space building. So that was a really long.
Excuse me, Jessica. Mr. Pearson had a question, I think, on amendment six.
Just the, not specific to six, but so with the state looking to reduce the permit timeframes. Is the city meeting the existing timeframes for permitting? And then are we, should we expect to see a lot of changes, you know, coming soon? I I think that there's like a two year window until the jurisdictions have to meet these timeframes unless, I don't know what happens. But is that? How is the city doing right now? And, you know, are you guys starting to make some plans to address that?
Yes, so it fluctuates just, but we're down a planner right now, so our planning side is is a little low. We're taking a little longer than usual. I think we can meet them and generally we do. It's twenty twenty, I believe, January first, twenty twenty five is when we have to start doing it. Since we have the new, the CEDplus permitting system, I can easily pull reports to be able to track that information and use that to send it to the state as well, because we're going to be required to do that. One of the things I'm working on right now is procedures and expectations for some of our front counter staff as well as the reviewers to say, these are the things that we need to be really good at checking. Because a lot of the times the review is, takes longer because the applicant gave us plans that were not complete or didn't meet the code or things like that. And so, or they didn't really give us a complete application, but we're nice and we accepted it anyway. So we're going to be very careful on intake to make sure that those plans are ready for review so that we can ensure that we're meeting those times and not waiting and sitting on them and then having to send them back and getting back things that aren't what we asked for and that sort of thing. So we're going to be a little more meticulous on the review, you know, kicking things out of the system so that we're not keeping things in a system that are just sitting around and it's not necessarily our fault. But for the most part, if we're fully staffed, I think we would meet them. I think we're at like a four to six week turnaround right now. So we'll, with some organization and some real tight parameters, I think we'll be good.
Mr. Buer.
A couple of things. Guess we're down people right now, but was also very difficult to find people. So it's a problem. Second thing that I would point out is if you want to get your plans approved quickly, submit a decent set of plans in the first place. That goes a long way in moving this along and I'm tired of taking criticism from the development community because it's all on the city's fault. It's not. A lot of this belongs on the, on the, on the backs of the developer for setting, I'm going to just say a crappy set of plans. And then we have to work with them and go through several reviews and we're still not even close. And it just gums up the whole system. The last thing I'm going to say is the state's coming out with these new regulations coming January twenty twenty five. I will stipulate to you that it's going to be by the book. And nobody is going to like it because we're going to say you're in or you're out. There is no grace periods. You're going to meet the code requirements or not. And it's, it goes both ways. And I think some people in the development community think that it's just going to be the city taking it on the, on the chin. No, you know, we want decent plans so that we can move these things along because at the end of the day, it is not to our advantage to hold up plans.
Yeah.
I'm on my, on my, my seat a little bit on this one, so I hope you don't mind.
Nope, I hear you.
I think that's common for a lot of jurisdictions because that's, that's a big thing is quality of intake and so.
Yeah, Mr. Larson.
And total support of that because every time you have to touch a programmer, an application, it takes time and effort and money. And and it's a very inefficient use for you. And so insisting on proper criteria the first time is heads up ball. How are you going to do that? Are you going to make sure that, that the applicant understands at the beginning how our very varying interpretations of code and applications of them for Lakewood are what they have to go by to bring in and give it to us right the first time or at least close to it.
First of all, we have some time. I mean, this is not applicable until January one, twenty twenty five. The second thing is, is Jessica's already taken us the necessary steps to get us there. It's just not, it's, it is upon us to make sure our code is accurate and efficient. But it's also upon us to make sure that the intake on the permit text is is where it needs to be. So, you know, I I would like to see a paraprofessional level of expertise and I I think we're going to get there. And I think in the end, I I think this will be good for Lakewood. And if I can give you a little side story, my, my son works in the construction trades a little bit and he was out with his boss talking about sewer permits and septic tanks and things like that. And one of the things that he has to do is get permits. And the comment that was made to my son was, and in Lakewood, you always get permits. Do not forget that. You get permits. So I I think we have a bit of a reputation for meeting the code. And so that means something to me personally because I want people to know we are going to enforce the rules.
Yeah. Mr. Wegman, do you have a question?
Well, I do. When, when you use the word flex and you say you're going to clarify that, but flex means I've got some latitude to do some things after we've given a permit. And now, how do you look to define that? Because the minute you tell me I have some choices, how does that go forward?
So the flex and the flex space building is actually tied to the way that the building is set up itself, not the uses that go in it. So that's what we're trying to clarify is that it's not about the uses. It's about the space itself is flexible so that different types of tenants would be able to use that. And it's more versatile. So in the definition, it goes on to talk about, let's see here, you know, it'd be medium sized tenants, predominantly required access for truck deliveries, things like that. And so it gives you what the flex space building is without giving you uses. And so we're just saying, you know, you could put any use in there as long as it's allowed in the zone already. So the flex is really tied to the type of building and the way the building is laid out and functions.
So what you're saying then is if, if, if I hire some guys to stand up a warehouse, put my four wall, just make it simple, four walls. And then all of a sudden I just decide to divide it up on the inside. The, the uses of the space, the individual units in that space have to stay within the code of that whole building. Is, is what you're saying. But, but I'm, but I'm flexible. I can move interior walls and those kinds of things. Okay.
Exactly.
Within the code. Yep. Great. Thank you. Continue on.
Thank you.
Must be in number eight.
Yes, number eight. Hopefully I can explain this one while it's basically in our, in the use tables. There's two ones that relate to mobile homes. One is mobile homes parks, just the parks themselves. And then there's one that says mobile homes in mobile home parks. So I think the way, reason it was created was to for parks that are nonconforming, so you can only put parks in three zones now and they're conditional use permits. But with the mobile homes in mobile parks, it was permitted in three other zones outright, as well as the three with the conditional use permit. And I think the reason for that was, and again, I'm guessing, is because there's nonconforming parks in those zones. And so we're still allowing the placement of those mobile homes. But this was very confusing to the public and they thought, oh, I can just put a mobile home on my, you know, anywhere in these zones that's permitted outright. And so the easiest way to do it was to just take that use type out and then rely on the mobile home park. Mobile home parks allow for ins and out of mobile homes. And so the ones that were nonconforming, they would just use the nonconforming codes to say, this is a permitted use. We're doing it within the nonconforming, you know, zone allowances and leave it at that.
You'd be surprised the number of stick built, nonconforming structures in mobile home parks. This goes back to what, how Jessica phrased, phrased this in her presentation.
Yep, Mr. Pearson.
So are, prior to this language changing, were mobile homes like replacement or new mobile homes allowed in nonconforming parks? And it's, there's no change? Is that?
Yeah, so essentially using the nonconforming code, you would say this is already permitted here. It's the same use you would, it's a park and so you could replace however many mobile homes that that park would be able to fit.
Based upon the septic or sewer system in place. And usually it's a septic system.
So technically no change. It's just semantics.
We, we are having some issues with two mobile home parks where we have nine nonconforming stick built structures. And then recently with the fire of the eleven mobile homes in Jamestown is, is, is causing us to sort of rethink what the city is going to do in the future with mobile home parks. And that's a, that's another subject for another evening. We would be happy or to review that with the council or the commission. But where we're headed with that, from my perspective, is declaring them all nonconforming, which they already are. But then allowing a zoning director's determination to allow them to continue to preserve affordable housing, provided they do certain things. One of those things is to have a management plan for the park and to get rid of all the trash, garbage and other material in the park. And then that is, that's the proposal I've given to the city manager. It seems to be accepted so far. And so we'll see how it works, but that's a further discussion for another evening.
Great. Thank you. Great. Continue on.
So amendment number nine is just another little quick fix. So under the, essentially the bulk standard tables area and dimensions, there's a lot size and all of them are per unit essentially. But the MR2 zone has this where it says for two or more lots. But there's nothing that says when one, you know, and or two or more units, sorry. So we just removed that because there, it, it wouldn't really make a difference if you're doing one unit or two units. And so three thousand square feet is the minimum lot size in this case. And so just to take the confusion out of it, while I was there, I also moved around this interior setback. We added a couple rows that probably didn't need to be there and I, I just moved them up to the interior setback line. So real simple.
All right. Continue.
And the last one is, it's kind of one of those things when you adopt a code and the wording is one way and then you start using the code and your zoning map adopts a different way of wording, something as this one really. So the, when the, it is it, the air installation compatible use zone study put out essentially what we should have adopted for our code for compatibility with Joint Base Lewis McCord. And in that, it called them, what is it, air accident potential zones. But when we adopted the zoning code, we called them air corridor as the zone. And so there was just some historical leftovers in the, the code calling them APZ Accident Potential Zones one and two instead of Air Corridor one and two. And so when we get calls from the public and saying, I can't find where the use tables are for air corridor, can you help me? This is just such an easy way to avoid that. And so when people do want to look up the code themselves, we are happy to point them to the right place. But hopefully it'll just keep us from getting a couple of calls. So that's all it is. It's just changing the name from APZ Accident Potential Zone to Air Corridor.
Sounds good.
Oh, I do want to add though, I did sneak something. I will not sneak, but I want, I have to. Oh, I do want to add, though, I did sneak something. I will not sneak, but I have to call it out. There was some recent, I think Tactical Taylor was coming into the north, the clear zone. And or no, it would have been the, I think it was air corridor. Because it's not allowed in the clear zone. And there was a question as to whether that use type would be allowed. It's not listed in the air corridor tables. It's in our regular use tables. And so I just added it here. We looked through this, the I still cannot remember the name of it, but the study that the code is based on to make sure that it's within those other allowed uses that we do. So instead of making the interpretation, we just added it to the code. So it was clear. So there is an actual change in here, but it's not really, again, changing anything. We would have made that interpretation anyway. Double check. There's nothing else. Yeah, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
To Miss Spear now, I believe, on number 11.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Jessica, thank you for advancing the slides when it's time to do so. So this amendment number 11 refers back to some of the public comment that you heard this evening from two different people. This is allowing what are called commercial childcare facilities. So this is not babysitters in a house. This is an actual business that gets a business license and has to comply with various different health and safety regulations in more places than is currently allowed within the city of Lakewood. And there was a reference to what are called childcare deserts. One of the things that you see here on this graphic is a couple of different logic flows to decide whether or not an area does have a childcare desert, just meaning a scarcity of this type of service. So if you could move it forward, Jessica. What you see here, this is the map of Lakewood. And these outer edges of the city, the darker orange, are considered areas that would be a childcare desert. And so the dots are in the highest quote level of a desert. And you see that, for instance, in Springbrook and Lakeview, some of our poorest areas of the city, as well as a couple of areas on the west side and then up in the northeastern side as well. So Lakewood does have multiple childcare deserts. And so this is an attempt to do away with that with some changes to our land use code. Next slide. So you're familiar with the full zoning code and map for Lakewood as it sits right now. What we are doing is to propose that commercial childcare facilities be allowed in the residential zones one through four, as well as multifamily three, neighborhood commercial one and two, the transit oriented commercial area, which is exclusively in the station district subarea, and then the central business district, which is exclusively within the downtown subarea. Putting it in MF3 and NC2, that allows these childcare facilities to happen where we do have deserts as just indicated on the last map in Springbrook and Lakeview. And what this does is allow the childcare to be within over half of the city's rough acreage. And also brings it into all zones except these that are listed, mixed residential one and two, multifamily one and two, military related, which is which is actually land in the city owned by JBLM, the public institutional areas, industrial and open space zones. So a different way to to see that graphically is if you go down this list of all of the zones in the map, those with stars are where you would be allowing the commercial childcare facilities to be added into the city. Next slide.
Mr. Pearson.
Oh, sure.
Tiffany, do you do you know the desert calculation? Like, does that is a commercial childcare facility something that's going to be, you know, like have like thirty kids or something or like where does did their study include like care.com where you have people that are watching like say five kids in their in their house? Because, you know, that's that's there's a lot, I would say probably even a vast majority of childcare is dealt with that route where you have a mom who's watching three other kids. So I I'm just curious if that was taken into account or not.
Sure. The definition for childcare desert comes from a national study. And then there was a statewide study that was attached to your materials this evening, which also talks about specific to Washington state where the childcare deserts are located. If I am remembering correctly, the commercial number I think is ten. But with Maria Tobin right there in the audience, if you're willing to hear from her, she might be able to give you better detail.
Yep, go right ahead, Marie.
Thank you for allowing me to comment yet again. I believe the cap in in the city of Lakewood is twelve for in in home based childcare center. But in response to your question, Mr. Pearson, in-home childcare businesses are not doing well at all nationally. And there's a reason for that because we're asking our residents to open up their homes, take these foreign children in. They're working more than ten hours a day. They don't get they don't get holidays. They don't get sick time. They have to they have to constantly be responsible for providing childcare in any circumstance to these children. Otherwise, these families go without. And this is all while the Bureau of Labor Statistics reports that for Pierce County in-home based childcare centers, those owners are making less than eleven dollars an hour. So the folks that are actually doing this, it is not a sustainable business model. And that's why we commend the cities for making this effort to expand childcare into residential areas for in-home based childcare, but it's simply not a sustainable business model.
Thanks. Great. Thank you. Okay, no other quote, Mr. Larson.
To my observation, this is a real step in the right direction. More families need a wider degree of support for their children so that they can be in the working community and so that children could grow up being cared for. So I think this is really a great move to allow it in more zones.
Okay, go ahead, Tiffany.
All right, thank you. Next slide. The last amendment is something that is kind of cutting edge. So we have talked in in recent meetings about House Bill thirteen thirty seven. This is the one that was passed this last spring by the state legislature that says cities, you now have to allow a certain number of accessory dwelling units or ADUs per lot. And if you'll remember, it is within parts of the city of Lakewood two ADUs per lot in addition to the primary residence. But in other areas, if you're within, I believe, a quarter mile of a transit station or major transit stop, it can be up to four. So where this comes in is if all of these ADUs are suddenly being actually required of the city to allow, what are they actually going to be used for? Are they going to be permanent dwellings for renters and or owners? Or are they going to become short term rentals? And the legislature actually anticipated this and has stated, as quoted here on the on the slide in front of you, that a city is authorized to restrict ADUs as used to be a short term rental. The point of the bill, the point of the requirement is to say we need more housing units now. And so we're going to require this of local governments. And we're not intending as a state legislature that this is purely going to become a new rental pool for short term rentals. This is supposed to be permanent housing. So Lakewood is is promoting and suggesting to the commission to consider approving restriction as allowed under the bill. And I think that's the final slide. Jessica, can you verify?
Mr. Pearson.
So is it, does it say that we shall restrict ADUs from from short term rental use?
It does not say you shall restrict it as you can.
Okay, yeah, I personally, I like giving people the flexibility, especially, you know, given the uncertainties in the housing market. You know, if you have an extra, you know, way of making some income, if you lose a renter or things get tough, you know, I would be, I think that what we would end up seeing is is fewer ADUs being built because there's more restrictions on allowing how people use them. So, you know, if if the US Open comes into town again and I have, you know, a house or or an ADU and, you know, I could make some money renting it out during some big event or something. I just, that's my personal view.
Mr. Buwer.
The other side of this is we have one hundred and forty six unregulated short term rentals in the city of Lakewood. And we also have some short terminals that have been turned into party houses where we are currently looking at enforcement action. I'm not disputing the comments from Mr. Pearson. I'm just pointing out that those are some of the issues on a day to day function that we we have to consider. And and if we're going to be requiring all these ADUs, you know, is it reasonable to assume that they be used for affordable housing versus rental income? That's more of a question rather than a.
Yep, Mr. Parsons.
Yeah, I mean, I'd echo the same, Mr. Pearson. I think, you know, even if something is started out as a short term rental, that doesn't mean it doesn't go in the pool relatively quickly when they have trouble filling it. And so for me, more housing is more housing in here. And so limiting it, I think, would stop the ability to get some affordable housing, even if it's not instantly, but, you know, maybe in a year or two, it goes into that pool. Completely understand. I think we do have to have the rules to enforce that we can't have party houses and things that hurt neighbors. And so along with that, making sure we're we've got plenty of enforcement and rules around around it so that we don't have those issues in the future.
Mr. Larson.
The opportunity to have more housing on us on the same piece of land seems to be a really good one. Because that's one of the problems that Lakewood has always had is the large lots that were created post-World War II and taking just a lot of land for older smaller homes. What I wonder now, though, is if we start tripling and quadrupling a density on a single family area, how you accommodate it from a utilities provisioned standpoint, which all were engineered to hold only a certain amount of water and sewer and even electricity. And I think that's going to be a limiting factor on this somewhat utopian desire to have a greater density instantly because there's some practical encumbrances for that. So do have we thought about that for us and how that's going to have an effect on this?
Yes, and you'll have that actually in front of you in the not too distant future. The city is starting to conduct its review of what's required under both this bill thirteen thirty seven regarding ADUs as well as eleven ten, which is the middle housing requirement bill, which also said multiple units per lot. And as you just said, Mr. Larson, there are significant issues regarding infrastructure capacity, particularly difficulty in planning for the future since the city does not own them. So yes, looking at the current road infrastructure, looking at current sewer and water capacity will all affect where those changes under both eleven ten and thirteen thirty seven would be applied as part of the bigger twenty twenty four comp plan amendment. But this is, again, looking at accessory dwelling units period and whether they would be allowed to be short term rentals rather than the permanent housing that I think was anticipated by the legislature. So thank you.
Yep, great. Mr. Strata.
Will these units now fall under the rental housing safety program?
If 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 they were sorry, I'm kind of stumbling. The short term rental one, that is not its own regulatory code yet. So I suppose if the city wanted to, it could certainly use the rental housing safety program to regulate them unless and until it adopted a separate one for short term rentals. The way the program works right now is it focuses quite a bit on multifamily, but it does also regulate single family homes.
We are contemplating amending the rental housing program to require inspections for accessory dwelling units as 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 well as short term rentals in addition to rentals of of units, whether stick built or otherwise in mobile home parks. So that's that's on the books. And we'll see where that takes us. That's going to come back to the city council at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Great. No other, oh, Mr. Person.
So my, I guess my recommendation for amendment twelve would be to remove the language for not allowing the short term rentals and and maybe add something, you know, to address some of the issues that you brought up, Mr. Buwer, about the hundred and fifty, you know, violation sites. What what are the common issues that are that are going on and how can we address those?
Well, it's really two things. It's really pretty simple. One, get a business license so that you can report your revenue. And two, the other one is you're required to have an inspection by the fire district to make sure that you have a safe structure. It's that simple. And yet we have people, in my opinion, who are either unfamiliar with this or choose to ignore it. And right now we have not been doing enforcement on it because enforcement has been focused in other areas. You know, we do major public nuisances, dangerous building abatements and and big things like that, bars and those kinds of things. The focus has not been on on rentals units or ADUs at this point. If if that's something the city council wants to consider, we have to take a look at what's going to go off the plate at the moment.
So if I could, not that I disagree with Mr. Pearson, but I recommend that we keep it in there and come back to the planning commission. And then we can vote on it on these amendments as we do. The process is normal. Leave it in there and then we'll kind of see how it flushes out at the time. So that's my recommendation. All right, good. Thank you. Mr. Larson. Oh, you're just waving. Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Tiffany, go ahead.
All right. So just this is the schedule, assuming that you feel comfortable at the next meeting to take action. It would go to the city council the following week and then move through action in October. If you do feel, especially with the one we just talked about, that you need more time, we can make adjustments at the city council level. But otherwise, you will have a public hearing on September twentieth on all of these amendments.
Great. Sounds good. If you have any conflict, please let staff know. So we make sure we have a quorum on public hearings. We want to make sure the public shows up, we're we're able to take some testimony. So great. Appreciate that. And Mr., where did he go? Our city council member. See, oh, there he is, Mr. Boki. Do you have anything for us today?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I do have a second topic on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go right ahead.
Okay, this will be very quick. This will be very quick. So the annual call for comprehensive plan docket amendments did occur this year for next year in addition to the big huge update that we've been talking about for actually a year now already. And so we did make a call out in the month of July. The only responses got with that we received back actually were from the city itself. So the first would be a one lot rezone requested by the Parks Department. It's another parcel that they would like to incorporate into Ward's Lake Park. And then the this is where it is located. And this OSR one area is already Ward's Lake Park, so it's adding a parcel to it. The second application is, excuse me, let me get to the right spot. The second application is to redraw the southern southeastern boundary of, sorry, of the downtown subarea. If you remember, these parcels were just talked about in twenty twenty three to be rezoned. And they were rezoned as central business district and taking advantage of the downtown form based code and other site design allowances and requirements. But now because of that rezone, we need to change the boundaries of the actual subarea. So because both of these were suggested by the city, what we are recommending to you as a commission is instead of taking this through the process as you would have last year with a hearing and a docket recommendation to council and then council doing the same and having it all come back to you next year, we're just going to incorporate both of those into the big twenty twenty four packet that you will start to hear formally next spring. So we will keep track of these two amendments and and bring that to you when the full package starts to get developed. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Boki.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work. I don't have anything the hours late, so I will. I'll let it go.
Oh, man, really? Thanks. We appreciate it. Thanks for being with us tonight in your busy schedule. in your busy schedule. Any other comments from uh commissioners? No other, any other final things from the staff?
Um, at this point, Mr. Chair, we're just back onto our every two week schedule, so I hope you had a good uh summer and enjoyed the the heat and the and the weather. Uh, but other than that, September twentieth will be the next one and then we'll be into October. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Buwer.
I was just going to add that when it comes to short term rentals, it's always a controversial issue. So I'm not surprised with the comments this evening. There is always dif- differences of opinion on this subject.
Yep, no question about it. And thank you, uh, Jessica, and welcome. Hearing or seeing none, we'll call meeting adjourned.